I can't actually see what's going on. So I'm gonna hand it over to Bronwyn right now.
Thank you. Per Governor and leaders' orders granting certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. The school committee will be using Zoom to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on channel 12, and a recording of the meeting will be posted on the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call. I'd like to start the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Kevin, you have some correspondence for us?
Yes, I do. We received a number of letters and pieces of correspondence regarding the reopening of the Long Island Public Schools. Letters from the following people will be recorded. Lanay Rondo on July 30th. Allison Robinson on July 31st. Rachel Richardson on July 29th. Mary Beth Rzyszewski on July 29th. Rebecca Provorsky on July 28th. Rebecca Powell on July 31st. Ariel Louderman on July 30th and August 3rd. Kim Ketchum on July 30th. Daniel Kennedy on July 29th. Alex Grant on August 2nd. Amanda Gonzalez Choquette on July 30th. Christina Fleming on July 30th. Jen Falcone on July 30th. Tom Dignazio on July 30th. Rich Alverd on July 30th. Catherine Lemay on August 3rd. Kristen Murphy, Brianna Vivier, Katie Burke on August 3rd. And an email from Mr. Joel McCullough, District Director for Senator Eric Lesser, received on July 31st regarding news on A-levels for fiscal year 2021.
Bronwyn, can I say something before you move on to the next thing?
Of course.
I just wanna, I wanna thank people because in our last couple meetings, we asked for the opinions to be shared with us. We made the visitor comments line or an email, an email spot open for people to share their comments regarding reopening. So I wanna thank everybody. They were varying opinions, and it was very helpful, some great ideas in there. So I'd really like to thank everybody for doing that. So, thank you, Bronwyn.
Sure. Are there any visitor comments? Okay, moving on to school committee.
Do we have approval of minutes, Bronwyn, from last time, or is that not on there?
That is... Does someone have that motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the July 28, 2020 school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have, I have, I have discussions. Diane, I spoke to you about forgetting to call my own name when we approved the minutes from the meeting before that. Has, is that fixed, or do I have to publicly fix that now? If I'm not on there as having approved the previous minutes, then I would like my vote to be a yes on that previous one. Other than that, I have no other.
Number three.
Suzie?
I actually am, I'm, I'm seeing that there's a participant in the Zoom who's trying to connect to audio. I don't know if that's someone who wanted to make a state of comment. But it looks like, I'm, I'm just seeing that Elizabeth Morgan is trying to connect to audio.
Elizabeth, did you have a visitor comment?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's actually working, but I, I just didn't want to leave, leave her hanging.
Diane, did you get Ryan's information about the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, I did. Take care of it.
Do we need to do a second motion?
No, I'll note it in the minutes.
I can amend my motion to just say the, the minutes as amended.
Okay, perfect. Uh, take a roll call vote. Uh, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And then Bronwyn, yes. One second. Moving on to business with guests, which we don't have any of. Administrative reports. Superintendent O'Shea?
Uh, thank you for the chance. I would like to use the time to, um, well, I, I suppose it's a little further down on the agenda, the reopening update. So my, any comments that you'll hear from me will be associated with reopening. So I guess we'll wait until that agenda item comes up.
Okay. Uh, Ryan, get his school committee chair report?
Uh, just what I said before, I appreciate the public in sharing their opinions without saying joining us again for this meeting. Um, their input has all been read. I've gotten back to a number of them, but the rest will be responded to as, as quickly as I can, once power is restored.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Armin, were you able to reconnect for a student report? Does anyone see Armin Asik on here?
No, I don't see him.
Okay, we'll come back to him if he's able to join us later. Um, other reports, the LPB-EC report. Uh, we're meeting remotely next week, either Wednesday or Thursday, uh, with the new executive director, Roland Joyle, uh, to approve the reopening plan. We got, we got an extension at the LPB-EC, so the plan will now be due August 17th. So I'll have more to report next time on LPB-EC. Uh, Kevin, anything on energy and sustainability?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, open space?
Nope, no report.
And subcommittee reports. We do not have a finance subcommittee report. We don't have a policy sub-report. We don't have a curriculum sub-report or evaluation subcommittee report. So moving on to the ongoing business, we're gonna discuss the reopening plan as outlined by the superintendent and administrative team during the July 28, 2020 meeting. Anyone want to start this off? Dr. O'Shea is probably the kind who wanted to...
Sure. Uh, I'll just do a, a screen share here. And if you're having any difficulty seeing that, just let me know. Um, so we had a lengthy and robust and productive, uh, meeting last week where we offered a reopening recommendation. The committee had a number of questions and some feedback, and so we tried to, uh, take those questions and the feedback and, and to provide you with an update and give you some additional information that will hopefully help you make an informed decision. For anyone watching at home, the intention was to provide you with this update tonight. Uh, we have another meeting scheduled of the school committee on Thursday night, and that would be another opportunity to get additional information and, uh, in all likelihood, make a final decision. So I wanna start with just sort of the conceptual, conceptualization of the, um, the models that we have been developing. The model that we recommended is in the middle of the diagram. The model that we recommended is in the middle of the diagram, and the three bullets describe the essential features of that, uh, recommended model, with the understanding that we will be prepared and should continually think about, uh, if we need to, uh, move back towards a fully remote model, uh, and then also regularly explore opportunities to phase in more in-person learning. Uh, the, on the left-hand side, you'll see that, you know, there are a number of called contingencies, and, and these are things that we, we want to make sure that we have in place, uh, if we have any in-person learning at all. And, uh, you know, I, I would want to make it clear to the community that it would be our recommendation that if we, uh, if these, these bullets on the left are not in place, that, that would mean that we couldn't continue with in-person learning. And so we, we will be continually tracking local health, health metrics. Um, we'll have to, uh, be sure that we have a staffing model that can support the hybrid model, staffing levels that can support the hybrid model. I think we, we, we recognize that there will be staff that have limitations, perhaps due to underlying health conditions, or perhaps there were real limitations, and that, you know, our, our plans have to, um, respect and incorporate those situations where staff would be limited. We would, um, if we couldn't maintain the six-foot distance standard, if we couldn't, um, ensure that we had all the supplies, the sanitization supplies, the PPE, all these things would be reasons that we would, um, not want to continue with in-person life. We would want to, um, to move towards a fully remote model. So I, I want to say, I want to emphasize that upfront. I want the community to understand that whatever decision the committee makes this week, um, I think we all understand that it would be subject to continual review, and that the best any public body can do right now is to make a decision based on, um, based on their current conditions and, uh, current projections with regard to, uh, the safety protocols and, and, um, based on our current understanding of the health metrics. And then conversely, you know, understand that, um, again, if the local metrics allowed, um, we will look for opportunities to bring additional students back for in-person learning. But obviously, we have to be sensible about it and, and put health and safety at the, at the forefront. So tonight, we wanted to update you in a few areas, and if there are others, we're happy to answer your questions. The committee should note that, uh, we have quite a few members of our administrative team, uh, with us here tonight. I want to, um, once again, recognize their dedication to this, the, the countless hours that they've put in, the collaborative approach that they've, um, and, and inventive approaches that, that they have brought to this discussion. Uh, and they have been all in on this for many, many months, and I appreciate their, their ongoing efforts. So there's three areas that we want to touch on. Uh, what, what would preparation and startup look like? Committee had some questions about, uh, our, our K-2 opening plan, and then we also want to talk a little bit about students in the group that we are beginning to book cohort C. So, uh, creating that runway, what, you know, preparation startup, I think we all recognize that both staff and students will need some time to get acclimated to whatever model it is that we adopt, whether it's a hybrid model with some in-person learning, or whether it's a, a remote plan. Uh, we want to make sure that everybody understands the health and safety protocols. We want to make sure that everybody has clear understanding of what the, what remote learning will look like and how it will support students. The, uh, sort of, one of the curveballs of the many that we've been thrown was on July 27th, the, the Department of Education signed an MOU with, uh, state-allied educator associations to allow for, uh, 10 days of school and staff preparation time. So we need to think about, uh, with the committee, how that would affect our, um, our academic calendar. And so I want to sort of offer a, a way to think about this. We've been in sort of that Phase One place for a long, long time now, months, where we have been engaging stakeholders and working with town officials and, uh, capturing DESI guidance and working with the LEA and working as an administrative team, et cetera, et cetera. Staff has been involved in, uh, professional development this summer to prepare for, uh, situations where we would have to support students remotely. And so that's ongoing, and will continue to go on. The, the first day that staff under our current calendar, the first day that staff would be expected to report is, uh, August 27th, and that would be the day that we would kick off sort of more of the in-person, on-ground preparation and planning. And, um, I'm calling that sort of still part of Phase One, but it's Phase One-B in the sense that, uh, we are in person. That would then continue, uh, under this, sort of, under this recommendation. We would continue with the in-person preparation and planning, um, until we, uh, got to the sort of the second half of the 10 days. And in the second half of the 10 days, what we're recommending is that, uh, at least three of those days involved in orientation. This would be a time where we would, uh, work on relationship building, where students would pick up Chromebooks, where they would pick up supplies and books, where they would come in for orientations, uh, where they would come in in small groups. We want to be sure that, again, everybody understands the expectations. School will look very different. Uh, there'll be different ways, different expectations that we have of students, and we want to use that time to, um, kind of, uh, slowly introduce them to, uh, what, what teaching and learning will look like. And we think that we can use the, the second half of the 10 days to begin that work, and that would allow us to be in a better position to open with the first day of teaching and learning, the first day of Phase Two on Monday, uh, September 14th. And that would be, uh, whether we, um, whether the committee, uh, adopts the, uh, hybrid model that was recommended, or whether the committee adopts some form of remote learning for our students. So, uh, this is a, a, a recommendation, uh, before you tonight. We understand that it's subject to additional conversation by the school committee. We understand that it is, uh, it will require us, uh, conversation with, um, the Long Meadow Education Association. So that is a, a sort of a quick description of, of how we might create that runway for both, uh, students and staff and families. The next thing I'd, I'd like to offer some information on is, uh, relates to our, our K-2 reopening. You'll recall that we had, uh, recommended, um, opening a daily full-in-person teaching and learning for our K-2 students. Our, uh, our principals feel that we are positioned for that here in Long Meadow. Uh, every district is approaching the question of bringing back students in person in slightly different ways, and the reason it might look slightly different in every district is that every district has school, schools with different footprints. Every district has schools with different class sizes. Every district has different busing requirements. Uh, every district has, um, different factors that would either allow for some in-person learning or perhaps not allow it. In our case, we feel that, um, that we have the, the ability to bring back our K-2 students, and that we can do that with them being, uh, at a six-foot distance standard. Our recommendation to you would be that, uh, students K-2 also, um, be, um, adhere to the mask requirements that are in place for grades two and above. Uh, we understand that, um, you know, that's, that's especially challenging for our youngest learners, but we have confidence that we can bring them along with that, uh, and that, and that we will, um, encourage a mask culture here in Long Meadow Public Schools. The, I will say that, you know, it's important for the community to understand that, though we are, that this is part of our recommendation, that, you know, we all need to recognize that, uh, teaching and learning for all grades, um, including, excuse me, I just had to admit some students, or admit some, uh, some viewers, that, that, that our classrooms will look very different. That the K-1, 2 classrooms that we are used to seeing in Long Meadow Public Schools will look different. The interaction between teacher and students will be different. Uh, we have, we have very warm and inviting classrooms, and, uh, the appearance of the classrooms will be different, but I know our teachers will do everything to make those spaces joyful and warm places, even with the constraints. But we all need to recognize that a socially-distanced K-2 classroom is very different than a, uh, a classroom that, a K-2 classroom not working under sort of pandemic requirements. So I wanted to offer to the committee, uh, a little snapshot of a parent's survey that we did after, um, after the meeting that we had last week. We asked parents, if, K-2 parents, if they would, would essentially send their children to, for daily in-person learning, and you can see the results there. I like to say that there's big numbers on both sides of this, right? We have 60, nearly 68% of parents said that they would be prepared to send their children in for daily in-person learning. And yet, we had nearly 32% of our parents tell us that they're not ready for that yet. So, um, I think it's, it's, uh, for your consideration, and our, a few of members of our, I think maybe all three of our elementary principals are now with us, and they can answer some additional questions that you might have. With regard to, uh, K-2, um, just a couple of things that you could think about. And again, I'm not expecting that you'll reach a conclusion on this tonight necessarily, but you could move forward with the current recommendation. You could move forward with the current recommendation, but schedule Wednesday for a full day of remote learning so that the, in that sense, the, uh, the Wednesday wouldn't be, uh, would be more similar to the pre-12 experience. Then finally, you could adopt the hybrid schedule for K-2 that is more in alignment with the grade 3 to 12 model. So those are sort of generally three different pathways that we could, you know, and I suppose the fourth pathway obviously would be if, if we chose to go fully remote for, for all grades or any grades. The last thing...
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, someone had a question in the chat about what percentage of students are represented by the survey? I'm not sure if they're, uh, just a K-2 one.
Uh, so we had 618 responses, which is, um, that is, it's nearly, if not full participation, it's, it's actually probably slightly more than our, our total number of K-2 students. It could be the two parents answered, but we're, we're right. The response was great. I, I, I'm confident that it accurately represents, uh, our, the feelings of our K-2 parents and caregivers.
Thank you.
So the last piece here, um, is the cohort model. I just want to bring that some additional clarity to this and then talk a little bit about the students in cohort C. So as we explained it, um, last week, we would have two cohorts participating in in-person learning on a rotating basis. Cohort A with us Monday, Tuesday. Cohort B with us Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being a day for remote learning and collaboration. There was a third cohort that we have an obligation to and that we want to support, and that is student stat by a family's choice. Those do not intend school, whether that's, you know, in any arrangement, even in a hybrid arrangement. So those are sort of the three cohorts of, of students that we would want to support. So similarly, we asked our grade 3 to 12 parents, uh, the same question. This survey went out Monday evening, and by this afternoon, we had nearly 1,600 responses. So this is representing, uh, parents and caregivers responding on behalf of 1,600 children, grades 3 to 12. And you'll see that we had 14.7% of parents say that they would opt for a remote-only learning plan, and 85%, slightly more, saying that they would participate in the proposed hybrid schedule. So to bring some additional information to you, we asked parents to let us know what the reasons were, if they were comfortable. Most in the orange here let us know that they simply weren't uncomfortable sending the child, given the current situation. The red indicated that there's someone in the household with a diagnosed medical condition. And the blue here, uh, which was around 7%, if I recall correctly, uh, indicated that the child themselves had a, had a medical condition, which put them in a high-risk category. So that's a little snapshot of the, the reasons that parents signaled to us for why they would participate in a remote learning only plan. And then when we think about supporting cohort C, meeting our obligation to educate these students, the recommended option that we're bringing to you tonight is to, um, provide these students with, it would be remote-only access to the staff and students who are working in the hybrid model. And you'll see that there are other options that we could explore and/or supplement with. We might, there might be students for whom a full online virtual program, and we would want to try to understand that in individual conversations with, uh, with parents and caregivers. So those are some of the ways that we can think about supporting students in cohort C. And thanks to Sue for sort of putting together this sort of, maybe easy, easy-to-access way to understand how, how the students in cohort C would be served. You'd see that the cohort C students would be learning remotely consistently, Monday through Friday. They wouldn't have, they wouldn't, um, be involved with in-person learning in the way that cohort A or cohort B would be. So, um, when we ask parents, uh, how, how they thought we could best serve the needs of children in, in cohort C, this is, this is, this only went to parents who said that they would opt out. You'll see that many said that they felt the combination of approaches made said that about 18% weren't sure, and I completely understand that. And you'll see that about 23% said that they felt that they, to provide these learners with remote-only access to teachers and students working in a hybrid model. So I believe that, so that's all we have for you tonight, but hopefully, uh, gives you some, uh, additional helpful information. The administrative team is here with us tonight, and, and they stand ready to, to clarify or answer any additional questions, uh, that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. O'Shea. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Suzie?
Yes, I, um, thank you for that information. I think, um, we had received a number of suggestions from, um, through the, um, many pieces of correspondence we've received, uh, about, uh, the plan and in response to the proposal. Those was, uh, the consideration of a potential half-day return for, um, in students K through 2. half-day return for, um, in students K through two with the, um, and, and I think there was, were some others such as, um, another, a, a town in Connecticut, uh, um, West Hartford in particular, and then, um, some other avenues for a full-day program should parents want it or dedicated to whether students remain who must remain for the full day or who, whose parents choose to have them remain. I'm just, um, curious about, um, any responses or, or thought from that particular those particular suggestions because that tended to be, um, when there was concern about a full-day return for the K to two in some of the correspondence we s- we received, it was either go to hybrid for the K through two or go to a half-day for, um, those students in particular. Can you, can you speak to that a little bit? Dr. O'Shea, because I know there's some like state laws around time on learning and things like that.
Right, right. The, uh, so the, we would be, um, we talked about that as an administrative team that would invite, if it's okay, I'd invite some of the administrators to, to chime in as well. A would be okay time on learning wise for our K students. Uh, if we did a half-day for our one-two students, we'd have to, um, sort of also supplement it with a remote program in the afternoon and we could do that. So that certainly is a, as a, the committee could adopt. The questions that we had related to the number of starts and stops that those elementary students would experience in a half-day model, you know, s- you know, the, the being dropped off in the morning, getting started with a in-person program, getting picked up midday and then getting ramped up for a remote experience in the afternoon. So that certainly is a model that there, um, some districts in Connecticut are looking at. And so that is, that is, uh, that could be a path forward for us as well. There are, there are advantages and disadvantages to all these things. The great advantage to what you're saying is that it's perhaps more bears, you know, given that they'll be wearing masks and that kind of thing. I suppose the disadvantage would be that the, the number of, uh, transitions and the number of starts and stops. So I think we'd have to, we'd have to weigh all those, but that definitely could be a consideration. What I, I think we couldn't in good conscience recommend is a AMPM cohort where we have some students come in and we wouldn't have enough time clean in between cohorts. I know that, that suggestion had come to us from, from some folks as well, but, um, yes, so, and I don't know if any of our administrators want to, uh, jump in on that or if you, if you need them to.
No, I think just the fact that it's, oh, well, yeah. Marty, I just, I think you just want to echo what you said, the, the continuity, um, would not be as, it wouldn't be as opportune if we had the half-days and we feel, uh, pretty strongly that we can give them a very good full-day experience, um, with a full schedule and allow for those, the, the times to teach them about masks and breaks and, um, social distancing and things like that. And we feel like we can do that best if, if it's a, a full return for a full day for the, for the youngest kids.
Uh, Ryan, another question. Ryan, are you still with us? Okay, uh, does anyone else have any? Uh, Jamie?
Yeah, um, I ju- I just want to clarify, uh, Marty, it's on the K through two as well. Um, I think I, I, I saw the slide quick, but I just want to make sure. So the K through two, um, we're saying that between the, um, families who would prefer full in-time or a hybrid model, I'll let you jump over that slide, especially following it. Just want to make sure. Give me one second here. No problem. Give me a couple of seconds. All right, give me one second, that's the one. First K one there. Is it that one, Ryan? Or is that one, am I on it? Can you see it? Yep, you're on it. Yep, you're on it. That, so, so it's just more clarification and then, um, you can make comment on as well. But so we said that this is a, a pretty large percentage of the families being our six hundred and eighteen responses, whether there's two parents or one, you know, so be it. But we have, um, what, eighty-six point four percent of the families, if you put the eighteen point eight and the sixty-seven together, that prefer in-person or hybrid. Um, so assuming that all those families would, I know everyone's going to prefer one over the other because it's the way they answered. But obviously, you know, the, all, all in-person, obviously, hybrid is a better option than, uh, no in-person learning at all is, is the way I would read this. So if that is the case, if we were to, um, um, say, look at this as a hybrid option, does that not eliminate or re- significantly reduce cohort C? So can they align us with cohort A and B? So with families with two different, um, will be aligned as a family? Is that a correct statement?
Uh, I would say that's correct, that you would add the sixty-seven point six to the eighteen point eight and that would be the rough percentage of parents and caregivers who would send their children back to model that was hybrid-based.
Got it. And that, that would essentially, it wouldn't be completely eliminate cohort C because we do, we do have other families that would be, you know, a part of that, but it would significantly reduce cohort C. And it would reduce the number of students going and the touches of students going in and out of our schools on a regular day if this K through two was the same, same hybrid approach as cohort A and cohort B based off of their last name. Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure because I, I, it went quick and so it's a number of the families and then, you know, from a, from a health, safety, well-being and, you know, a really prescribed and, you know, make sure we're doing this to save this hospital opening. You know, it w- would help align our families. It may not be what everybody wants, but it would at least align our families and not have this cohort being at our schools five days a week. Instead, it would be two days with the rest of the family. Essentially, okay. No, I just want to make sure I follow it up.
Uh, Ryan, can you hear us now?
Yes, again, thank you. Um, my question was about the health metric. So, um, it was mentioned, I, I forget in which slide it was towards the beginning about how we have to meet metrics in order to move from one plan to the next to get us all back in person. Um, who, what are those metrics? Who, who's giving to them, them to us? Have we got any directions from the governor or DCE? Uh, I ask because our, uh, infection percentage or the infection rate percentage is like two percent. And I wonder how long it would be before it would be any less than that? And if there is a requirement or a request from the commissioner or the governor for towns to be at a particular percentage before they send kids back to school.
So I think you asked, you asked a key question and, and it's a question that many superintendents have asked of uh, mass DESE or mass DPH is, is could they establish sort of a, some benchmarks? Whether would they be applied at the town level or regionally or, or wider? But those types of benchmarks would be helpful if we had some clearer idea of, you know, when in the opinion of the Department of Education, communities or regions ought to move to a full remote model. I think we're going to hear more on that, uh, in the days ahead based on, uh, some comments that the commissioner made in a statewide call that we recently participated in. I, I'd be, I'd be interested in, in, um, reaching that understanding as well. Not to paint ourselves into any, any corner, but as a starting point, I would say for when we move in and out of the various models.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be full information. I know Beverly was on with us on our last meeting and seemed to indicate that she thought our numbers had been good for, for a stretch. Um, but obviously things are going to change. There may be, because we're a small community, it doesn't take many K two or many people to change our percentage the way it would on a, like Springfield with a hundred and fifty thousand people. It's gonna, it takes more to move their percentage than it does us. So I just would like, um, if we could get some information on, uh, what those numbers are. I think that would be helpful for everybody because, you know, we, we, unless it's up to us and we're making the statement, yes, we are at a good number, then what are we basing that on, you know? I know Massachusetts as a whole is looked at nationally as doing very well. New England as a whole is looked at nationally as doing very well. But it would be great if we had some actual numbers, some data to say we, we did, we are at this point and that's why it's good. And then maybe three months from now, something happens and the number goes way up and we know exactly why we have to change our plan. Or they get significantly better and we change it the other way. I just, I just think that we should, if we're not being given those, then it's up to, it's up to us to decide and that just seems wrong. Thank you, Brian.
Uh, Dr. O'Shea, can you do it full screen? Because I can't see everybody and see if there's questions.
Uh, full screen, uh, uh-
The people.
Uh, I don't know if I-
I meant, uh, not the, uh, power.
You click on the, click, click on the arrow.
Stop sharing, Marty, because we're all too fast.
Stop sharing. Okay, gotcha. All right.
Brian, when you can just click down the right, they should be on the right. I know Gianna has a question.
Okay, Gianna? Gianna, you're on mute.
There we go.
Thanks, um, um, thanks, Amy, for scoping me out there.
Sure.
All right. So Superintendent, th- thank you for all this planning and I, I know you've said this before, we just appreciate it. I appreciate everything that everybody is doing, um, particularly about cohort C, because I know that I had some questions about that earlier. Uh, and I just had a, a follow-up question and, and I know y'all are, are still working things out, but, um, for the cohort C, it could forgive my numbers, but, you know, it could be maybe potentially two hundred plus students. Uh, and if some of those students, you know, some are medically prescribed by their doctor that they can't go to school. Um, and some, you know, might have social, emotional, behavioral reasons for not attending, um, you know, maybe say like an anxiety or four, six hours. Flip side, some of those same students, emotional, um, you know, behavioral, like a sports club or an extra bat yet. Um, or if that is something that could be considered coming, coming down the road because that's a, it, 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 when I look at those kids, you know, I don't think, like, they're not the kids that, you know, are just saying, you know, oh, I have a stomach ache and I don't want to go to school. Um, there's real legitimate reasons, um, even if they're not medically prescribed, that they couldn't be successful for six hours in, in that setting, um, but they could be successful for an hour and a half to two hours um, in a setting that, that could lend themselves to helping their mental health or social, emotional, uh, behavioral supports.
So I'm wondering if you could clarify that, the question, Gianna, are you wondering about the, the reasons or the?
No, I, I guess I was just wondering if they could, i- if, if students are in the opt-out fully remote, um, for the academic portion of the day, if they could be allowed to participate in sports and extracurriculars that enhance their self, uh, learning factors.
Right. I think we, we need to try to dig up an answer for you on that. Um, this doesn't directly answer your question, but I, I will say that we heard the commissioner say the other day on a statewide call that if communities, um, are in a remote-only arrangement that he felt that he couldn't support, uh, districts running any interscholastic sports. And so that answers your question sort of on a, a district-wide level. Then we'd get down to sort of the student level is sort of the, um, I guess my sense would be that if students are in cohort C, that if we are running some extracurriculars or if we are run, you know, if we're running extracurriculars and those extracurriculars are running remotely, you know, we would want to give students access to those extracurriculars. I think the problem will be that we may find that many of our extracurriculars won't be able to run, you know, uh, for, for this. Some, some extracurriculars can be run remotely. Some don't lend themselves to that. Uh, we may find that some sports, um, are low-risk and can be run by districts and we'll, we'll probably find that there are high-risk sports that, uh, will not run across the state. So, um, I wish I had a clearer answer for you on that, Gianna. My, my general inclination is always to, to try to include students as much as possible. Uh, but there might be, uh, I don't, I don't know what kind of limitations there would be at sort of the, at the district level in terms of what clubs and activities we're able to run.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent, and, and I guess.
Gianna, we're not able to hear you right now.
Breaking up, Gianna, a little bit?
I think if their sports were running, I just want those kids to be here.
Okay, I think, I'm pretty sure she said-
I'll try it again.
Oh, go ahead.
We're good.
Okay. Uh, Ryan?
Sorry, I, I was just saying, I'm wrong with that.
Gianna, you keep, uh, freezing, so we're not able to hear you. Uh, Sue, did you want to add something?
I wanted to translate if I could because I heard most of it. I think she wants us to be mindful of including all students and whatever opportunities we can going forward, even if they are in the C group.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ryan?
Thank you. I was similar to what Sue just said. I just want to clarify that the C group are people who opt out of school no matter what grade they are in, K to twelve. No matter what plan it is, do you say we're going hybrid or K to two, going full-time, anyone who chooses to stay home for whatever reason becomes cohort C. The K two kids as a whole are kind of like their own cohort at the moment, with K to two. So if they go hybrid, K to two kids would be included in cohort A or cohort B, depending on their last name. And then the cohort C are the people who choose to not go to school. So Marty, my question about that group, I think it's similar to what Gianna was saying, well, the commissioner said that if a district goes remote, they're, they don't get to play sports. But if a parent chooses to keep a kid remote, they are not excluded? Is that mentioned or do we have any guidance on that?
The, the, uh, at the, at the parent and student level, it did not come up in any statewide call that I have been a part of. So I suspect it would be left to the discretion of districts. And as I said, my inclination would be to, uh, include the cohort C students in extracurriculars to the extent that we safely can.
Right, I, just to share, just to share my opinion, I would, I would not, I would not be in favor of excluding students from extracurriculars because their parents, um, are worried about COVID and would choose to be bothered with kids. But that's just my two cents on that.
Kevin? Kevin, did you still have a question?
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Can you hear me all right, Brian?
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so a couple things, um, one- Alright, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so a couple things, um, one, uh, I guess, you know, Marty, just thank you for the, the presentation. The survey responses were especially helpful and, and the, the clarity on, on Cohort C was helpful as well, so thank you for that. Um, I, I fully agree with Brian's point about metrics. It'd be really helpful to understand what those are as we look to move between, uh, the various pathways, um, on that. Uh, I had, I had two questions, but I want to first start with the K to two ones. Um, I, I guess I, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused as to why we're having a different option for the K to two kids. I don't quite understand why we've, uh, singled them out for something different than the rest of the district. And, and two, just sort of thinking about what it's going to look like for teachers if they do have their entire class fully in person. Um, that, that seems like an incredibly difficult job we're asking them to do, uh, with our youngest learners. So I, I really want to understand a little more why we're, um, why we're proposing a completely different model for them than the rest of the kids in the district. Thank you. So that's question one. I would love to come back to question two anyway.
So our, um, as I saw, our task, it was to, um, consider how we could, um, return students to in-person learning while meeting the health and safety guidance that has come from various sources. And the DESI guidance was explicit about the, um, students that we should consider as for, uh, priority in terms of returning them to in-person learning. Uh, the students on that DESI list included, uh, preschool students, students that, uh, with intensive special needs, included ELL students, it included, um, pre-K to five students. And so we took a look at, we did the pressure testing and concluded that we could not safely bring back, uh, all of our pre-K to five students, but that we could safely bring back our pre-K to two students. Our feeling is that these are students who, uh, tend to be more dependent as learners and they're students that also, um, are as difficult, as, as challenging as it, it will be, no doubt, to teach under the conditions that we, um, are projecting. It's perhaps more difficult to teach kindergarteners, first graders and second graders remotely. So I think it's a challenge either way. Um, but I think our, our thought was that this was a group of students that, that we felt we could prioritize for in-person learning. I certainly, we've gotten a lot of feedback on it. I certainly recognize that, uh, there would be some value in a consistent K twelve experience for our families and that it, it could be a challenge if you have a, a first grader who is in person and a fourth grader who is on a hybrid model. I think that's a, a real legitimate concern by some of our, that some of our parents have expressed. Um, I think one of the, you know, yeah, the reasons why K one, two, I think one of the other reasons is the sort of advantageous class size. Uh, we, you know, other districts, uh, probably didn't have the class sizes that would support and allow in-person learning for K two students. But those are some of the reasons that we identified, uh, those learners as, you know, priorities for, and, and possibilities for in-person learning.
Thank you. Um, if I could just add a completely different question, um, I, I think you, you started to answer this Marty, but I, I wonder if you could go a little bit further. Um, you know, as we think about whether a fully remote start as a phased-in way to go is, is the right way to go. Um, you started to say that the state was giving us some sort of guidelines and guidance as to what they wanted us to do or, I, I just wonder if you could talk a little bit more about, uh, what the implications would be perhaps from the state level or anything else you wanted to add? If we did opt to go for a phased-in start that included a fully remote, uh, opening as the start?
There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any restrictions, uh, on us opening that way. The, um, you know, the reason to do that would be to, uh, give us time to, um, work out some of our remote learning, um, techniques and approaches. And also give us time to watch the sort of local conditions and see how this virus progresses. The reasons not to do that would, or the reason to open on a hybrid basis is that we would have an opportunity to, with students in person, to establish those relationships face-to-face that are so critical for learning and that are, that are really foundational. And so to have the children in front of us, even if, even if, um, we find two weeks, three weeks, four weeks down the road that we cannot sustain that model, for whatever reason, we think that there would be some benefit to opening on a, on a hybrid basis and having that face-to-face time with kids to build the relationships and establish the patterns that, that we can use for remote learning down the road. So again, you know, this is, this is a, such a complex issue and I, I completely respect and understand how people will look at this differently. In my view, it would be advantageous to have some time with students in person. Again, to build the relationships and establish the expectations with kids. And again, I, I, so many members of our admin team are here and I, I invite them to, they feel so inclined to raise their hand and add additional information on that, if you need it, as a committee, if you need it.
Marty, I just had a quick follow-up question to, um, Kevin's. So, um, the commissioner said if we open remotely, um, for whatever time remote, we won't be able to have any school sports. Um, what were the other things that he mentioned?
One of the other things he said in con, that, that's sort of gotten some attention is, um, is the, is the funding issue and, and we've been, districts are fortunate that there's access to federal funds and state funds to support the costs associated with opening on an in-person basis. Um, he qualified it. It, it wasn't, it wasn't emphatic. It was more expected, say that he questioned whether or not, um, districts might be, um, jeopardizing access to, um, funds to support reopening. And again, I think the, I don't, I do not want to suggest to the committee that that was definitive. I would suggest to the committee that that was part of a, uh, an open conversation and it's something for us to factor into the decision and keep in the back of our minds. I wish I had more definitive information for you on that, but that, that simply doesn't exist.
Okay, thanks. Um, Ryan?
Brian, can I, can I just one quick follow-up on that? So Marty, you're saying even if we decided we wanted one week of remote opening, that would eliminate us from athletics for the entire fall season?
He didn't qualify it in any way, Kevin. He simply said that districts that were remote, so, um, that they, it would affect the ability to be involved with interscholastic sports. I suppose the reasonable, uh, the reasonable perspective would be that if you're out for a week, that when you come back, that you would be able to access interscholastic sports to the extent that they're even allowable. So I think your question's a good one. It was not, not, it wasn't that the commissioner, uh, said that we wouldn't ever be able to participate if we were remote for any small amount of period. They had cautioned everybody to say we all, we should all just wait until this is, uh, written on paper from the department. I'm giving you the best information I have right now, but we've received no written definitive communication on either of those issues.
Oh, did you have a question?
I did, thank you. Um, so I, I, I realize there's a lot that's still unknown and there's a lot that we're maybe waiting on clarification for. I hear you on wanting that in-person time to build those relationships and to get kids sort of sorted out. Um, I think one of my questions, and I, I understand that you don't have answers to this now. One of my questions comes back always to, if we begin on a hybrid basis, at what point do we know that, okay, we need to shift to remote? And I know that we don't have that answer right now. What I'm wondering is what do you think the likelihood is of us having that answer? Um, before we are committing ourselves to a model on an upcoming vote that might be happening on Thursday?
I, I have, I'd say I definitively have most of that answer. I can say with, you know, with confidence and certainty that we would not maintain any in-person model if we did not, if we were not able to adhere to the safety protocols, if we found that they were, um, not sustainable, if we were efficient with our facilities in any way. Um, if the staffing model didn't support it, if, if we couldn't maintain the six-foot standard. So I, I would want to be clear that I, I have, and I, and it's been included in our points, very, um, specific contingencies that need to be met if we are in person. What I need some additional information on is, is sort of what you're suggesting is, is that, you know, what are the very specific health metrics that, uh, Mastaphy would advocate or advise on, or what are the very specific health metrics that we, uh, want to see here locally? And that's something I, I will do some additional work on with, um, local town officials and with, with associations at the state level. I, I would like to see that myself. I think right now we've gotten advice that, um, you know, the, the clinical advice from DESI and CBC is that, um, we can safely reopen following the safe, the very strict safety and health guidelines that, that are in place. And, and I think to do that on a hybrid basis is, right now, based on what we know, uh, makes sense. But I, I completely understand the, the hesitation and, and the need that for us to all to understand that that could change.
Um, Ryan, did you still?
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Brian. I have two and one, I'll go with, uh, this one in order because it follows up on that conversation. Um, I'd like the, it's more of a statement, so sorry, it's not really a question, because it gives families the choice. If we were to go for a more, for remote, there is no choice to send a student to school, but if we have a good plan for the opt-out, the Cohort C group, that allows those kids, um, full access to a large metal education, then the parents get to choose. If they choose to do whatever was twenty percent or that are uncomfortable, if they say, I'm uncomfortable, I don't want my kid to go, they have that option. So there is that safety and then should the situation merit it, it allows them to say, okay, it seems to be working, I sense they might get to school now. Uh, you know, based on the health metrics. So that's not really a question. But my question was that, um, from one of our, um, community members' emails, uh, I guess it might be for the administrators. Is there any thought of getting, um, a group of people in, whether it's teachers or, um, the administrators themselves to kind of model a couple of classes and go through part of the school day to really get a good sense of what students will be going through? I, I've mentioned before, I believe that as a principal, I did student for, for a day where I followed a couple of students through to sit with them and go to lunch with them and just kind of live their life for a day to, to remind myself of what it's like to be a kid. And this is going to be a new version of what it's like to be a kid, so it might be beneficial and instructive for those of us making these decisions, maybe live part of that house. So it's, uh, a thought of and, uh, something for you to consider. Thank you, Brian.
That's where the, the ten days really could work to our advantage to do just what you're describing, Ryan. Uh, we, we met with our curriculum leadership council the other day and they talked about using that time to assemble sort of critical professional friend groups to run through, um, the model classrooms that you're talking about and sort of, uh, test the approaches or from like instructional techniques and the technology. The other thing, if we have the, the three days at the tail end of those, that ten-day period, be for teachers to do that sort of trial and error where, you know, I think the teachers are really eager to get in and sort of tinker, pull up their sleeves, get their hands dirty on, you know, the, the techniques and technology that, that will support the model.
Thank you, that's great.
Uh, Suzie?
Yeah, I, uh, thank you. I know we've been talking about, um, you know, students opting out, but, but there's also a consideration and, and I think it's important to, um, get clear for the, especially the committee to be clear on what are the implications for staff who, um, have indicated that they're unable to return? Where, where are we at in terms of, you know, the percentage? And I, I know that was presented, um, in the, in last week's, uh, during your presentation last week. What's the impact of that for, especially for a hybrid return?
So we, we have queried staff to find out, um, the percentage, they may have some limitations either because they have some underlying illness or, uh, immunocompromised situation, or they may have some child care considerations. Um, Sue or Tom, I might turn to you and see if you, you know the percentages, but it was, uh, it might've been, you know, I, I'd have to go back to the other PowerPoint before I remember. Um, I think the, one of the contingencies that we have with everybody about is that if we go hybrid and we find that there are, you know, we simply can't pull together the, the staffing to make it happen, then we would have to consider a remote arrangement. And that's where we are, we do have concerns about the number of staff that might have some limitations. We won't know that for sure. We're working it through. There are many staff that have approached the, uh, the town HR office to sort of confidentially talk about what limitations they might have. And then to go through that process to see what, if any, accommodations, um, that we could grant them or what limitations they have and what, um, protective protections they would have access to. So that is something that we're working through. I think we, all the principals have thought about sort of backup plans, you know, is, what, what is the, what's the, what's the plan if there is a teacher that has limitations? If, for example, um, at a particular grade level, there is a teacher who can only work remotely, uh, that teacher would be available to support learners who are working remotely, particularly if there's a large enough cohort of students. Um, they, there could be new assignments for staff where, where folks who had previously worked in, let's say, an intervention role or coaching role might be involved in more, um, direct classroom instruction. And, and then the, the classroom teacher who had the limitations, that person might wind up having to take on more of a, a remote intervention role. So, um, we're going to have to be flexible with the way we respond. The people could be taking on new and different assignments based on this. And if we had, so there's a, there's a number of different backup plans that we have in place, um, to sort of backfill if there are staff with limitations, but that's a very real concern that we all have. And, um, that, and you, and you work closely with our, our HR office and the principals on some of these issues.
Um, I know HR is working on trying to, uh, increase this committee vote on a plan where we'll send out an off-staff email kind of outlining some of those benefits and, um, I know, as Marty indicated, a number of individuals have already reached out to HR, uh, to discuss with them their particular situation. I think a number of staff will also wait and see what the school districts where they reside and what plan, uh, that district will be adopting and what in fact that has on their child, their situation. So I would expect in the next, uh, week or so, we'll, we may see a, uh, an increase in the number of people who are contacting HR in regards to, uh, returning to work in the fall.
Uh, Ryan?
Yeah, on that topic, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, on that topic, I understand what you're saying about childcare there at home, but we can make our decision, people who live in other towns may have to do based on their children. I'm, I support 100% anybody who has a medical reason for not being able to come in, that's legitimate, and if the doctor gives them a note, that's legitimate. But childcare issues from, because people live in other places and, or even if they lived in town and they had a cohort A kid, now they're going to be home, what, on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday? I don't think we, I think they would, there has to be something from the town where they would have to take maybe some sort of sabbatical. But I don't think we should be saying that we're going to allow people to say, I need to be helping my kids so I can go to school and teach. I think either people have to, I mean, I'm a principal, I have to figure out this problem myself on my regular, for my regular job. And people have to sort that out or, or not work. That's how that, that's how that works. I don't think we should be making our plan based on what might happen and, not badly or I go on my level. Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, just to kind of, I was kind of following the whole conversation went out, but the expectation would be is if we, if we did have concerns and we needed more staffing, we would post and attempt to attract new, new folks into the town, correct? To teach the classes that we need them to teach, whether it be from other towns, whether it be from our own internally within the town. That's what the expectation would be. Is that, is that what I'm, am I following that, that once we, once we say, okay, we're going to have a, a group of staff that may have concerns, you know, we may have to go out and hire many that have to come in that is, that are able to teach in the approach that we agree on. Correct?
I think we, I'd say that it's going to be very situational, that if, if, if a staff member is out for a limited amount of time, then we, we wouldn't do that because it, it, you wouldn't attract, be able to attract a qualified teacher into that position. But it, it appears that it's going to be an extended period of time if someone is, is out for the year and that they couldn't work remotely even for some reason, and that we're not part of a, an accommodation, then in that case, we would. So I think we would have to make some case-by-case decisions about how to fill in for a, a teacher that has some limitations. Extended family medical leave provisions of FERC, it offers 12 weeks of coverage, and that law is set to expire December 30th. So we don't know whether or not that, that federal law would be renewed. We don't know whether or not extended family medical leave will be extended further. And then there are leave provisions in our contract also that we would have to adhere to. So I don't know that I, I don't know that I can say in a, in a simple way how, you know, what we would do if there's a teacher who's not available for some reason.
Mr. Landers, I just had a quick question about, some people were curious as to, I guess at all levels, but specifically the high school, how the teachers might address the students who are in a different cohort while they're at home and address the students that are in front of them as well. So basically, they'll be addressing three cohorts at the same time? I didn't know if you'd give an example of that.
Sure. The, the plan of the district is that in order to not, kind of a get-go, that we're only going to do 50% of the curriculum, in order to take a, take a stab at its, at reaching as much the curriculum as possible, we can only do that through engaging students every day. So that model is what you're saying, and it's not easy by any means, but I would have, the average high school classroom can fit 13 maximum in a classroom at six feet. So you could have 13 students in front of you, and you could have 13 students at home. The cohort C students aren't already involved in that number. So I, that's why I like the, the approach to cohort C, that we're engaging them, whether if they're home voluntarily, they would be part of their own cohort as long as they were going to take advantage of the LPS option. Like the superintendent mentioned, there might be some unique cases where maybe a student has to watch smaller, younger siblings, and we would want to be flexible with, with those families and maybe give them a, a prepackaged state option. But we would hope that the majority of our students would stay engaged with cohort A and B. And it's not easy, Bronwyn, it's not going to be, I mean, I think it's more of a challenge for adults to do the hybrid model than the remote model, but I think the benefits for the, the benefit for the students outweigh the hard work for the adults. I don't know if I'm, I'm answering it, but you're right, we have, they have to do two things at once. They have to teach the students in front of them, and they have to try to keep the students engaged. I can speak to it at the high school level only. Our proposal is for four 70-minute classes per day. So the students at home don't necessarily have to be synchronous with the teacher for 70 minutes. But we would want, and I think the superintendent talked a little bit about that last week, we would want a very explicit lesson, maybe for the first 20 or 25 minutes or so, and then students could either work in cohorts or in Zoom or independently. Times you could have cohort groups of students at home working in a group with the students who are sitting in room 212. But it's not easy, but that's, that's the approach that we're ready to take on. I, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that's super helpful. I also wanted to say that I can imagine that's going to be very, very difficult, and we do appreciate the admin and teachers, all their hard work, working with two different groups at the same time is very, very difficult, but we're confident that if that's the position that we're in, that we'll do that really well. So thank you. Dr. Gile, did you want to talk about the middle school at all, just to give people a look at that?
Yeah, Bronwyn, I, I would just echo what Mr. Landers just said. He really summed it up perfectly. I think the one thing I would add is we have such a luxury to have, you know, the technology at our disposal to really make those meaningful connections, I think, to all stakeholder groups, regardless of whether they're in the classroom remotely or hybrid, whatever, whatever cohort they are in. We similarly to the high school would be running about a 60-minute block. The idea would be you, you open up that learning block with a meaningful, engaging lesson that is accessible remotely, synchronously, and obviously, the teacher is working with the group of students. And then there is, you know, opportunities after that, engaging lesson which, you know, will not exceed, or, or maybe does. And so we're, we're kind of ballparking a, you know, a mini lesson of 15 to 20 minutes, followed by, you know, really meaningful, you know, meaningful ways to engage kids in collaborative experiences, or maybe it's independent work and, and some sort of closing lesson, a closing portion of the lesson. So very similar to, to what the, what the high school and Mr. Landers just explained.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah.
Marty?
I might just add, you know, the idea is you're trying to bring everybody along, you're trying to progress through the curriculum, as Mr. Landers said earlier. And I think the alternative, the, the not desirable alternatives of what we're describing is that teachers would have to do the two things. They would have to develop lessons for the in-person learners and develop a separate set of lessons for the remote learners. I think we can get to a place where, you know, the teachers and students are working in municipal, whether they happen to be in front of the students or happen to be remote. I think that's a, that's the goal.
Sounds great.
And just maybe, I'm sorry, Bronwyn, maybe the last thing, just to hit upon, I, I think that's really important, is, you know, the structure of the actual learning block is really critical in, in trying to give them, the students, the appropriate amount of time to really engage in the, in the content. That's, that's what we're really trying to focus in on. So that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Gianna?
Thanks, Bronwyn. Superintendent, I probably should have asked this before, but it just occurred to me now. Like, let's say we, we do start in a hybrid model, and I love the idea of like the parent conferences and the in-person engagement, but for some reason, let's say we then do have to switch to a fully remote, would we still be able to take like the bits and pieces of the hybrid, like those parent conferences, and be able to do those, or is that like, you know?
Yeah, I, I think what, what I hope, what we tried to convey is that one of the key premises is that the, the approaches, the models, the schedules, the expectations that we would have in the, in the hybrid arrangement would translate into a fully remote arrangement. And so we would want that the engagement that you talked about, Gianna, could happen in, in either model, that we're, you know, the, the communication between families, the feedback that families receive would be key. And again, I know we hit on this, but just, you know, that, that assessment and feedback would be, you know, will not mirror what we saw in the spring, it will be more similar to what students and families are used to, and that there will be attendance requirements and that they'll be set and defined schedules, whether we are in a hybrid pattern or a fully remote pattern, that will be set, defined predictable schedules for teachers and kids. So, yeah, I, I would say, so the quick answer is yes, those things could translate.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
One last one, sorry. So the, the committee is charged with voting on your proposal and, and where to go next. Has any guidance from the state been, I know there's a, there's a meeting on August 11th for school committees, which is well after anything's due to the state, which doesn't really make any sense. But I'm wondering if school committees are given opportunities to, you know, if, if they, if they make a vote, that they can, you know, revisit that vote or the proposal should any circumstances change or metrics change that, that allow us, that, that signal to us that perhaps we need to make some, make a pivot, so to speak.
I will explore the mechanics of that, but I would, I'm confident that you would be able to revisit and pivot the way you described. You know, how it would happen in terms of the reporting to the state, I think that's something I'm less worried about. I think, I think you make a great point that, you know, the decision you're, you're making perhaps Thursday night, it doesn't mean that we would blindly march towards that reopening model without regularly, almost on a daily, on a daily basis, reassessing where we are. But I'll find out more about the mechanics of that.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? If no one minds, I'm just going to go back to Armin. You weren't able to connect before for a po- a possible student report.
Uh, yeah, so I've been getting some concerns about this topic reopening from students that I just wanted to report before your vote on Thursday. Many students have expressed concerns over being socially and emotionally supported during the process of returning to schools. And as we talked about, the possibility of switching between models, some of the concerns revolve around a potential interruption that would occur if we were to, for example, switch from an in-person or a hybrid model to remote education, should metrics turn that way, and how that could cause some serious challenges with making sure that students are supported during that time. And I know that many of those concerns are already being addressed, but I just wanted to bring those concerns to the attention of the committee as a consideration prior to your vote, especially because a hybrid model is being considered pretty seriously. So.
Thank you, Armin. Is there anything else?
No, that is my report.
Okay, thanks. Now, we don't have any new business. We do have an executive session. Someone want to read that motion?
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Master of Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff, and for the seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And do a roll call vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bronwyn, yes? So we'll move into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff, and consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, everyone.